Yeah, let's go. I was in a hurry. Roll call vote, or roll call please.
Miller? Eckhart?
Here.
Benson?
Melton?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 15th, 2015. Approval of claims in the amount of $280,711 and 11 cents. And payroll expenses of $101,303 and 38 cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I've got a, I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford and a second by Councilman Fisher to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
We have Councilman Miller now here.
Miller?
Yes.
Item number six is reports from boards and officers. Personnel committee meeting report from June 15th.
Let me get back to you. Personnel committee met on the 15th of June. We discussed, we gave whether a report was given on the sign up for the Wellness Center as a benefit for the employees of the city of Alva, and that was very well received. We did have some discussion on the development of a full wellness program. Also, we discussed training for Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment and trying to get something theirs finalized to get that done. And we had the discussion on the development of a city council handbook. And some of that documentation has been completed, but we're still working on some of the other stuff. Most of it was discussion and, discussion only. There was no action taken on any of it, or recommendations to be made.
Anybody have any questions for Joe Don? Rec Park Board meeting. Councilman Fisher, do you have a report? Anybody have any questions for Councilman Fisher or anything to add? Thank you. Tourism Board meeting from June 17th.
They had a pretty standard meeting. Some things have kind of got a little out of order in my book. Let me look here, tell you what they did. If you would like to go on to the next committee, I will find the tourism board information and let you know in just a second.
All right, we've got Water and Wastewater Committee meeting from June 30th. Councilman Fisher?
We reviewed the, um... We reviewed the bids that came in for automatic metering assistance, and we'll have that in there later. We'll have our recommendation.
Any questions for Councilman Fisher? Anything to add, anybody? Finance Committee report.
Pretty routine updates on our review of cash investments, review of purchase orders. Joe Don updated us on the possible incentive request for new construction development. We're still waiting on the rezoning from agriculture for the business. Talked about the projects that we'll, again, we'll be discussing later, the airport taxiway lighting and remarking project with the AMR project funding, and then received a homestead operations report from that. Revenue and our occupancy rate are both up. We are fully staffed now at the homestead, and we reviewed the satisfaction survey, which gave a lot of good responses. Probably the biggest thing that came out of the survey was some issues they want to deal with with some of the laundry services, which they're, they're addressing right now. That was about the big standout.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Hannaford or anything to add? Thank you. Joe Don, are you ready?
Yeah, the tourism. Some of the things that were discussed and voted on was the approval of Heartland Best 2015 robotics building competition, Paydirt. And that was approved up to an amount of $5,000. There was also a discussion on whether or not to fund anything for the Glow Run, and the Glow Run was, was, was approved in an amount not to exceed $2,805. The last item on that agenda, or the one, the next item on the agenda was the funding for Alva's Crazy Cool Boulevard Cruise, and that was approved in an amount not to exceed $3,500. And then the last item on the agenda was for the approval for the Nescotunga Golf Tournament in an amount not to exceed $4,617.53, and that was approved also. And those were the items that were discussed at the, discussed and approved at the tourism meeting, along with routine things such as minutes and financials.
Anybody have any questions for Joe Don? Okay, Joe Don, what about Northwest Water Action Team?
The Northwest Water Action Team met on June 25th. Basically, as a, the team hosted a briefing with Lieutenant Governor Lamb and the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Director, Scott Thompson, just to give them a briefing over what the team had been doing over the past year and the developments that we've made, and to get them basically up to speed so that they would be ready to act with funding should that request ever need to be made. And it was well received. All of the groups that are, that participate in that group, organization made a 15, 20-minute presentation over what the plan meant to them.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe Don? The Mayor's Report, I'm sorry, I didn't get you a written report this time, but I'll just make a couple remarks. I want to say that the city staff did a really good job of getting the park ready for all of the 4th of July independent festivities. The park and the pool and everything looked good. You know, the organization and all that with having the roads blocked where they needed to be and that sort of thing went real well. And then I know Joe Don and then also Councilman Miller of this group were, I guess your service is greatly appreciated, appreciated the volunteer time that you put in to help us have fireworks and all kinds of events for the community. Lots of people chipped into that. It was a really great community event for Alva. Tourism Committee played a big role in that, and I think it's a good example of what our community can do whenever a bunch of different groups get together to do things, so. That concludes my report. Anybody have any questions from me? All right, we'll go to the City Business Manager's report.
Well, we had the bid opening for the taxiway extension on the 29th of June. There were no bidders at that time. There were a couple of them that had said they were interested in bidding the project, but they were having trouble getting some of their documentation from their subs that they needed. That project's currently out for rebidding, and is scheduled to be opened up on the 20... On the 29th of July. We do expect to have a couple of, at least two bidders at that time. We've finished up our project mapping as a effort to keep the citizens of Alva more informed about infrastructure progresses that we've done and are doing. We've got three maps out there right now. There's on the website, available for public view, and one of them's an outline of street projects, which the city anticipates completing this, this budget year. Another one is the wastewater projects to include fire hydrant replacements that we anticipate completing this budget year. And then the third one is a map of street projects which have been completed in previous years. We do anticipate keeping these maps up to date, and that way the public can see where we're going and where we've been and what needs to happen. As far as street projects are concerned, the city is putting the finishing, the city crews are putting the finishing touches up on the High Street area where we've been working over the past few weeks. The streets have been, the curb and gutter's been installed, the, they've been milled up and chip sealed and all that. The crews this week are working on cleaning out the gutters to dress that area up. On July 1st, the crews started milling on Linden Street. This street will be milled and chip sealed. Once they're finished with Linden Street, we anticipate, we anticipate a move being made down to the east side of town and start working on Mimosa and in that area, and then moving west. Water projects that we've got going on, we finished up the Linden Street project. We were able to get this done in about a week and a half. We also had two sizable water line breaks around town during that timeframe. Upcoming projects that we've got, we've got the installation, got a water line installation and a sewer line installation along Lane Street. We've got a lift station project at the sanitation and transfer station, and a water line replacement project over on Sealing Street. Along, those are the ones we plan on doing. The wastewater line along Young Street, we will have to contract out. We don't have the equipment or the manpower to get that done safely, and we will also do the same with our water line replacement project up on Young Street. We've got the, one project we've got out for, we've got one project out for RFPs right now, and that's our insurance rates. We've got one that we are, we're putting the final touches on the RFP and fixing to issue out is our tourism tax audit, and that should be out on the street within the next two weeks. And Mayor and Council, that would be my report at this time.
Do they have any questions for City Business Manager?
Joe Don, I just want to say thank you to the water crews. Those weren't any fun.
No.
Those days were extremely hot. Of course, there were significant leaks, so.
Yeah, there were significant leaks on major lines, basically shut down the entire town. People ask why that happened. It's just the age, it's aging of our infrastructure, and that's going to happen, and we're trying to get those things fixed and repaired.
Thank you. Item number seven is discussion and action, and discussion and possible action regarding Resolution Number 2015-106 to establish an investment policy for the city of Alva, Oklahoma.
This is a resolution we do annually at the beginning of every budget year that allows us to take any, take, take the funds that are not immediately needed and invest them to hopefully earn, have them earn a little bit of money instead of just sitting in our checking account. Again, this is an annual resolution that we do, so it's pretty routine.
I would, if there's no questions for Joe Don, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2015-106.
Second.
So, Melton?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilman Miller to approve Resolution Number 2015-106 to establish an investment policy for the city of Alva, Oklahoma. It was second by Councilman Melton. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight is to discuss and vote to approve a fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget amendment in the amount of $136,770 to complete the Alva Regional Airport Runway and Taxiway Remarking Project.
This came as a recommendation from the Alva Airport Board, and what's happening is that we had a second project that we had out for bid that we opened up on the 29th of June, and that bidding came in, that bid came in significantly more than what we had set aside for it. The airport does have the funds available to do the entire project and get it completed. This is a vital project for the airport to get their approaches published, and they're asking that we, their recommendation would be to pass a, pass Resolution 2015-107, which increases their budget by $136,770.
Anybody have any questions for Joe Don? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Motion to approve the budget amendment to the amount of $136,770.
Can we include in the, actually, Resolution Number 2015-107? That is attached as part of the, of the amendment.
I make a motion to approve Resolution. I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-107. As a member of the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Dr. Hannaford, to approve Resolution Number 2015-107, budget amendment in the amount of $136,770 to complete the Alva Regional Airport Runway and Taxiway Remarking Project. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is discussion and action on the recommendation from the Alva Airport Board to award the Alva Regional Runway and Taxiway Remarking Projects to Libra Electric in an amount not to exceed $215,765.
This is the second part to the, this is the second project that was bid out on the 29th. There was only one bidder, Libra Electric. The base bid was for electrical work to make the current runway dark, and it had two alternatives, alternates. Then alternate one is to remove all appropriate marking from runway 1735 and re-mark it as a taxiway and add reflectors. Alternate two was just to appropriate, appropriately, excuse me, mark runway 1735 for abandonment. The project was to, the goal for the airport was to have this runway 1735 as a taxiway, and alternate one is the addition that would, would make that happen. So that is the recommendation of the Airport Board. Again, this is about, our current budget for this project was $78,995. With the budget amendment, we did get, we do have budget, budgeted funds now at $215,765. The airport does have funds for this.
If there aren't any questions for Joe Don, I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation from the Airport Board to award the remarking project to Libra Electric in an amount not to exceed $215,765. The runway and remarking project, $215,765.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Melton, to approve the Alva Regional Runway and Taxiway Remarking Project to Libra Electric in an amount not to exceed $215,765.
There's not a, a project number associated with it or a resolution number. It is just the Alva Runway and Taxiway Remarking Project. That's my title.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and action to approve, disapprove, or disapprove being a partnering organization with AirMedCare Network for the city of Alva water customers.
And Doug Little's here, and he can talk a little bit more about the, some of the specifics of, but in a nutshell, what they've asked. They've asked for us to do one of two different things for the citizens of Alva, and that is to be a sponsoring, a partnering organization that would allow the citizens of Alva to join AirMedCare, the AirMedCare Network for air ambulance services. There were two, there's two alternatives to this. One, alternative one is the, the citizen comes in, we, we help host a sign up day, have it here in City Hall. We help with some promotions on our water bills and items like that. If there's any advertising that is going to be done, AirMedCare does that. If there's any documentation or any printed publications that need to be done, AirMedCare would do that. But at the sign up, option one is citizens pay their $50 and they're signed up for the year. Option two is, and both these options could be offered, would be that we allow the citizens of Alva to pay that out at, at $5 a month for, on their water bill. The city does not remit money until they have, to AirMed, until they have collected the money. So we would go out on our bill, and when the citizens came in and paid their bill and remitted those funds, and we remitted those funds to AirMed, we would remit a list of names that, on who paid, so that AirMed would know they're a member. If we go with, if that option is offered, the $5 a month, the city would be able to retain 50 cents per customer as an administrative fee. The $5 a month is obviously more labor intensive on the city of Alva. We would have to be able to track who paid their bill and whether or not they were an AirMedCare Network member, and then make sure that AirMed knew that those people were paying their bill. So there's significantly more work on our end of that process than the other one. If option one is the only option we want to offer, then we bring them in, we host the day, we help with some advertising the way, on our water bills and to get the word out that we're going to have it, but when they come in, they sign up, they pay their fee, and, you know, they're signed up for the year. We're done. Doug, has that pretty well summarized that?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know why it came over. You did a good job. A couple, I guess a couple of different things. The first option that's on a, on a one-time bank, one-time pay, basically what I call it, is, is $55 per household, so that covers everybody in that group. You know, it's just like your standard membership. You're flown and you're a member, you're out of cost of flight, $10, no matter what your insurance picks up. And, you know, it's, it's the same, same thing all, all the way around. You know, you go wherever you need to go, whether it's a hospital, hospital transfer, whether it's a seen flight, doesn't matter. It's all, it's all covered in the same membership. The second option that Joe Don was talking about is what we call a monthly membership plan. A lot of people I've found on our signups don't feel like they want to, or can't even pay $55 at once, but they never miss that $5 a month that goes on the bill. And we have a lot of people, Woodburn, Shaddy, Burn, signed up on monthly plans. It's, it's been a huge success, and that gives them another alternative to, to get coverage.
Are they covered once they sign up, or are they not covered until they pay their full amount?
They're, they're covered once we receive payment.
Full payment?
Well, the $5.
$5, right.
Because on the, on the monthly plan, if they're on the, the annual plan or the multi-year plan, then they can, you know, as soon as we receive payment for that, however they sign up for a year, we, we, we'll cover it.
Joe Don, the way it's played, the city would not be responsible if somebody did not pay their, no, no, no.
The city, the city's not responsible for anything. Only thing we have from the city is a little goodwill, helpful signups. We give mailers to everybody. Some cities just give us the mailing list for everybody and say, you know, give it to us on an Excel spreadsheet, we send it to corporate, they send it after they have the corporate. If the city doesn't want to do that, I've all, I've, the city sometimes makes up the mailing labels. I've sit, and I don't know how many offices and stuff, input, put a mailing label on in the office and stamp it, and mail it right there, too. We're flexible on that. We know, when we know with you guys having a postcard billing system, it doesn't lend itself to, to putting our, our stuff in with your, with your monthly bills, so we're flexible on that. Kind of whatever works for you guys, works for us. But the, the city's not liable for, for the memberships, they're not liable for advertising, they're not liable for hosting, you know, hosting, anything like that.
What's the helicopter ride cost on average?
On average, helicopter ride in our network, which is four different, four different providers, company-wise, $25,000. I'll tell you that it'll, it costs more here because we live out in the middle of nowhere, and we, we travel long distances. So if you're, if you're the pockets from Alva to Oklahoma City, you're probably talking on top of $30,000.
Is Eagle Med part of this, or is it separate?
It is, yeah. The two providers that you guys would have, would have knowledge of is Airby Black Team versus Woodburn, which is the closest, closest aircraft to, or to, excuse me, to Alva. Now, remember though, too, your membership just doesn't work in Alva or Woods County. It goes wherever our network is. And we're in, we're in 32 different states now, and have 220, 228 different aircraft two-hundred-and-twenty-eight different aircraft, I believe, and we're up to over one-point-six million members, so.
So even if you're out of state and something happens?
Yeah, yeah, anywhere we are, your membership's good. So if you're in Texas, or you're in Arkansas, or now you're in Georgia, or Idaho now, I believe, I mean, we're, basically, we're almost everywhere except the Northeast.
Joe Don, when an individual signs up to get water service from the city of Alva, do we inform them that we will be giving their information to prospective companies and things of that nature?
No, because we honestly, we haven't been asked for that, that type of information. But anything other than what is, what would be private information, name, address, that would all fall underneath the Open Records Act, and we would have to provide, you know, somebody coming, you know, who lives at nine-eighteen Barnes, we would inform them of that. We wouldn't have to tell, we could tell them their consumption history, we wouldn't tell them how much they paid, we wouldn't give away their banking information or anything like that. We wouldn't, we wouldn't give out phone numbers if we had them. But the basic information would be all falling with the Open Records Act.
So would we do this yearly, like sign-ups?
I think we were talking about maybe doing it twice a year.
Twice a year.
And in my experience, there's always people that, if we're over here August eighth, no doubt people will show up August the ninth, oh, I forgot to do that when I handled my stuff in. And obviously, you know, we'd like for you guys to take it, and then we can come and pick it up. I can come and pick it up. But, you know, Northwest Electric, as an example, we've been doing this similar program with them for, before I started working for AirMedCare Network, so it's been going close to nine years. And we have mailed out information, I believe, three times in nine years. But Northwest Electric always keeps the information in their office, and somebody comes in and signs up, you know, they help them sign up if they have questions or anything. It's not, it's not anything that we want to do every month or anything like that. But there will, on the other hand, there will be people that sign up every month.
Joe Don, have we gotten input from the people that it's going to affect working wise of...
Haven't talked a whole lot with staff about that. Obviously, if we wanted to do the monthly, the monthly payment arrangement, Doug mentioned Woodward, they're on the same system we are. I'd want to get with Woodward to see what they've got set up, so that, to make that as a non-intrusive burden, or less of a burden on any of our staff.
But the action is just being a partner organization, we don't have to choose an option tonight, do we?
Not at this time, no. Just if we want to be, if we want to be the sponsoring organization, I would think at a minimum, we would choose to do the sign-up and come in and pay. And start making those arrangements, and then if we wanted to sit around and discuss whether or not we wanted to offer it as a payment arrangement type of a situation later, that would be fine. We could certainly get the ball rolling, because it could all be, it could, you know, the payment arrangement could be advertised or told to the customer at the time of sign-up.
Option two just seems like an awful lot of work for an off-site retirement. Does, yeah, does the fifty cents cover the cost of handling that?
If we have two people come in a month, yeah. If we have three hundred come in a month and want to sign up, probably no. Depends on who's signing up and when.
I mean, what happens if somebody signs up, they pay for a few months, and then month three, they can't pay it for some reason?
They choose to not pay it. We, if they, if AirMed doesn't get the notification from us on who paid, and they've got, let's say, you and I are on the list, and you pay and I can't, if my name's not on that list, when they get that check, they cancel my membership, my understanding.
And then they might come in month four, pay the five dollars again, and...
Then they'd start back up.
And restart. And you start the whole process over?
Yep.
Would that work for us?
Yeah.
What if, when you start, when you fill out the paperwork, you're signed up, and if they don't pay, they don't have to refill out the paperwork?
Well, they wouldn't have to refill out paperwork, no, but we, all they'd have to be added to is, they'd have to be added to that spreadsheet list, so it adds up to with that check.
And the one thing we would want to do if we did the five dollar a month deal is have somebody signing their, sign a form saying, I acknowledge that the city is collecting five dollars a month for my AirMed insurance membership fee. That way, and that would be, you know, they come in this month, I come in this month and say, I can't pay it, I'm going to take it off, and they're going to sign an acknowledgement saying that we, they realize we're taking them off, if we get to have that face-to-face conversation with them. If, then when they sign, come back in, hey, next month, hey, I want to do it, then we're going to have them sign that agreement again, saying we...
You have to deal with a lot of water bills, it seems like we're just asking for more.
And quite honestly, that doesn't happen that much. It really doesn't. If for some reason somebody decides that they don't want to pay for it anymore, they don't usually jump back on. It's, you know, our retention on monthly plans is over ninety percent. So it doesn't usually, you know, people don't flock back and forth.
And this fifty cent a month on the option two, is that the same deal that every other community has?
Well, it seems to me if the city offered it twice a year, do it on six-month payment, ten dollars a month, that's sixty bucks, that covers your meta-flight, and five bucks for the city office and your dime. In a half a year, you paid for a year, and it's ten bucks a month.
But that's not an option.
It's five bucks a month.
Five bucks a month, or the whole thing?
Doug, what percentage of people that are using the system are all on that monthly pay?
I would say in Woodward, probably close to a third. So it's substantial.
The monthly pay through their city?
Right, right.
Because that's the only way, that's the only way the monthly pay is offered, is through the city billing system, is it not?
Well, no, if you were, if the city decided not to do any of this, you can still sign up on a monthly plan as an individual, but it's six dollars a month instead of five. So, so the water customers are actually getting a little bit of a discount off the monthly membership as well.
If somebody doesn't do the, come in once or twice a year, is it possible for them to sit in or send in, you know, the stub from their city bill, to still get that same rate, as opposed to coming in here if they didn't, if they didn't want to wait three months to start when the next sign-up date was?
Right, oh, yeah. The city of Alva, each plan would have a specific plan code for that, for that specific plan. So, yeah, if we had a sign-up day, let's say, and they missed it, and they just wanted to call into the corporate office and sign up, they would just have to find out that code.
Then we could give them here?
Yeah, because you'll, because the city would actually have some of those applications on hand.
So since when they could be able to sign up?
At any time. At any time, right.
What other qualifications? I know you did, like, churches, is it discounted, or like that, but then there's, used to be like, even church concerts or something like that.
Yeah.
You've gone to the U.S. Central at one time, my new church is still alive.
We're trying to group city plans, churches, chambers, other groups, I'm trying to think, booster club, there's everything, fire departments, EMS crews. I mean, we had about twenty separate plans, and it was a nightmare to keep up with. So we've included everything under this plan, which is, which we're calling an affinity plan. So, so, you know, the, technically, technically, you don't have chamber plans anymore with church plans or anything like that, they're all affinity plans.
But that's all covered, or is it umbrella of that one plan? So pretty much anybody qualifies, just about anymore.
I try my darndest to get, to get it where everybody can sign up for a discount. Absolutely.
Is that a household plan or individual?
Yeah, yeah, for this plan, for one, for one year, it's fifty-five dollars per household, and then as you go up, if they want to, three years, one sixty-five, five years, two seventy-five, and at ten years, five fifty. And as some people can attest, if you are ever flown and you're not a member, you can't ever get caught back up. You just, and, and, you know, a lot of people look at it, you know, you sign up as a member and you hope you're never flown, and you're just like you got, too.
I just don't think that option two, the city gets a very good return for a lot of work, or what we're going to have to do, and also might just pleasantly get boys to come. The only option they still have, though, is the year, I mean, they couldn't do a three-year plan through the city, or could they off their water bill?
Well, yeah, a customer, one of your water customers, if they want to sign up for a three-year membership at the discounted rate.
They could do that.
They could, yeah, yeah, because that's, that's one of the options.
But that discounted rate's still five dollars a month. It's what we're billing.
Well, okay, I must make sure we're talking about the same thing.
I'm saying if they signed up for a three-year, which is more than five dollars a month.
Right.
Could they still do that through the, through us, I guess, as one of the...
Yeah, because that's, that's on that, that's on that. They have the option to sign it up, on the, on the upfront, on the upfront program, they have, they have the option to sign it up one, three, five, or ten years.
But that's, that would be paid over the twelve-month, one-year...
No, that's, that's, that's one-time payment.
That's a one-time payment, yeah.
Okay, but they can't do any of those other plans on the installment, basically?
Yeah, the only, okay, the only installment plan there is is the five dollars a month. Yeah, and actually, actually, it's not one year, it's just month by month.
Well, yeah. Okay. Can we visit with some of the other cities that actually do that, and we see what, and they go from there, what they think that, you know, because they would, I mean, that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if, if we decided that we were even going to look at doing that, I would certainly get a hold of the people in Woodward and some of these other communities that are doing the month-to-month deal, and finding out, first of all, I'd want to find out how they're doing it through their system. I know Woodward's on the same computer system we're on, and that's the reason they would be number one on my list, but how they're doing it through our system, how they're getting the information to AirMedCare, and all of that, all those particulars, if that is a route we even want to go down.
But that's what I was asking, I mean, we could still approve this action and make the decision of how we want to, what options we want to do before we do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's great to offer this to our...
I think that, and I think that, yes, we would sign the deal, saying we are going to be that, we're going to do that at this, but at this time, we're just going to sign the one for the group members, because there's two agreements here. And that, and that, the, one is the AirMed Network Affinity Group Membership Discount, and that would be the discount for lump sum payment at the beginning. So we're saying, yes, we would offer that, for sure. Now, if we want to do the other one, we sign the memorandum of understanding, saying that we will, we will come back to get, have that approved at a later date, saying that is the one, we will offer that also, once we find out more of the particulars, if that's something we want to look at.
So we can approve option one with the later, once we investigate, yes, the option two, whether or not we want to participate in that.
Right.
Council, have you had a chance to, you know, membership discount?
If there's be what is standard in management, that would be...
Sir, if there's no further discussion, and thank you, Doug, but I would entertain a motion to approve the group membership affinity discount for our water customers with AirMedCare Network.
I'll make a motion for the city of Alva to be a partnering organization with AirMedCare Network for the city of Alva water customers.
Is that motion going to specify which option we are...
Yeah, it was the affinity, I said the affinity group, I don't know if that's what you intended.
Yes, that is.
Yeah, that's, that's complete.
I thought I heard a second. Okay, still. All right, I have a motion of Councilman Milton, second by Councilman Stelling, to approve being a partner organization of the affinity group membership discount for Alva Oklahoma water customers with AirMedCare Network. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Milton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Doug.
Before you guys move on, do I need to stick around for anything else, or are we done with my part?
We should be done with your part. I'll be getting in touch with you tomorrow.
Out of work, appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is discuss and vote to approve annual lease at the East Lagoon site, Kelly Thesing, in the amount of five-hundred-and-ten dollars.
On June nineteenth, we advertised forbid the leasing of the city lagoons, the solid waste transfer site, west of town, what I'm going to refer to as the shares, the South Share Farm. And for the East Lagoon, we got one bid from Mr. Thesing. He is the current leasing, and that amount was for five-hundred-and-ten dollars a year. And I, at this time, I mean, that we accept Mr. Thesing's bid and approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve Kelly Thesing's bid in the amount of five-hundred-and-ten dollars for the East Lagoon site.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Milton, and a second by Dr. Hannaford, to approve lease, annual lease at the East Lagoon site, Kelly Thesing, in the amount of five-hundred-and-ten dollars. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Milton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is to discuss and vote to approve the lease at sanitation transfer site to Mike Zimmerman in the amount of sixteen dollars and two cents an acre.
During that same time, Mr. Zimmerman was the only bidder for the transfer site.
That's out west.
That'd be out west, yes. The, he bid sixteen dollars and two cents per acre, or about, or it's twelve-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and sixty cents per year. I'd make the recommendation that we approve and authorize the contract with Mr. Zimmerman.
Anybody make a motion to approve?
I'd motion approve this, Mike Zimmerman, for an acre at the sanitation transfer site in the amount of sixteen dollars and two cents per acre.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford, and second by Councilman Fisher, to approve the lease, transfer station site to Mike Zimmerman, in the amount of sixteen dollars, two cents per acre. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for remarks and inquiries by citizens. Anybody wishing to make public comment will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and please identify yourself if you have comments. If there being none, we'll go to remarks and inquiries by council members. There being none, we'll go to remarks and inquiries by council members.
So does the South Hospital site lease at a different time of year?
Leases this time, the lease is up, it will not be leased, because there's no bidders at that site. We, um, can do something to see about getting it leased. We may advertise it again, but both the West Lagoons, nor the, uh, what I would put as the South Share Farm, were, were bid on, but nobody turned in a bid. So they are not leased at this time. It means we're going, if we don't get a bidder on it, and we don't do something to try to re-establish some interest in that, we're going to have to maintain the property and mow it and...
How many acres?
Uh, that South Share, I think now, is about twenty-five acres. Yeah. Twenty-four acres. It was originally thirty-two, but we ended up selling off about eight of it.
Further remarks or inquiries, inquiries from council members? All right, well, we'll adjourn the city council meeting and call to order the Alva Utility Authority Meeting. Please call the, uh, roll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Benson? Eckhart?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Hannifer?
Here.
Okay, item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved as at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed on, uh, placed as, uh, placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, approval of claims in the amount of eighty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-four dollars, sixty cents, and payroll expenses of twenty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-thirty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Someone?
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Fisher to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item number five is discussion and action to approve or disapprove the acceptance of Automatic Meter Reading Project bid from Ferguson Water Works in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
On the twenty-sixth of June, we opened, uh, bids again for the AMR Automatic Meter Reading Project. At this time, there were two bids successfully submitted. One was from UTS Supply at seven-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. The other one was from Ferguson Water Works at six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. These bids were evaluated by staff and the Water Wastewater Committee, and the Water Wastewater Committee is recommending that we award, we award the bid to the lowest and best bidder, Ferguson Water Works, for six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Anybody have any questions for Joe Don or any members of the Water Wastewater Committee?
What's the timeframe that they have on the contract?
Uh, contract timeframe is a hundred and eighty days to complete the project.
Any further questions?
Is there a penalty clause in the contract?
Yes, sir, there is. The, uh... I believe we've got it in here at a thousand dollars a day.
Are there any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of the AMR project bid from Ferguson Water Works in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and accept the project bid from Ferguson Water Works in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Melton, second by Councilman Eckhart to approve the AMR project bid from Ferguson Water Works in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling? Fisher?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
We'll now close the meeting of the Utility Authority and open the, call to order the Alva Economic Development Authority Meeting. Please call and roll.
Melton?
Here.
Hannifer?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Benson? Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and approval of claims in the amount of twenty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-four dollars and fifty-five cents, and payroll expenses of seven-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I have a motion by Councilman Miller, and a second by Dr. Hannifer to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Hannifer?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Okay, with that, I will, we will adjourn the Alva Economic Development Authority Meeting. Thank you, gentlemen.